Okay, it's nine o'clock. The meeting is called to order. We're meeting in the central jury room at the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street. J.C., would you lead us in invocation, please?
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, as we gather here today to do the business of this county, we ask that you be with the commissioners' court, the judge, to give them the wisdom and the guidance to do the things that is beneficial to the citizens of Hood County. We ask that you also remember those who were involved in the Boston Marathon explosion. Wrap your loving arms around those, give them comfort, and send them on the way to healing. We ask you also to remember those in West Texas. They had a big explosion. There was a lot of people hurt, a lot of people suffering. Do the same for them. Put your arms around them and watch over them. We thank you for the many, many blessings that you give us each and every day. We ask that you be with our military throughout the world, be with their families, for they too serve. All these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Do you all mean to pledge allegiance to the United States of America?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you all mean to pledge to Texas? Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation for the National Day of Prayer. Commissioner Roan?
Whereas throughout history mankind has relied upon prayer for comfort, direction, and strength, and whereas these prayers encompass concerts for family, concern for family, community, state, nation, and the world, and whereas in 1952, an annual National Day of Prayer was made official with the signing of a joint resolution of the United States Congress by President Harry Truman, and whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan set the date of the Annual Day of Prayer as the first Thursday of May, and whereas the National Day of Prayer pays tribute to our nation's democracy, which represents the beliefs and protects the religious freedom of all people to pray, worship, or abstain according to the dictates of their conscience. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Darrell Cochrane, County Judge, along with the Commissioners' Court of Hood County hereby proclaim recognition of Thursday, May 2nd, 2013, as the National Day of Prayer, and commend this observance to all citizens of Hood County, Texas.
Okay, entertain a motion to accept this proclamation.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Dever. Is there any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carried. Thank you very much. The next is a presentation from Joe Williams of the LGWA, and Joey, it's really Grisham, but it's of the EDC. So, is Joe here? Why don't you come forward and make your presentation?
Joe here?
No.
Yeah, Joey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pull this up here a little bit closer. Of course, you know, I'm Joey Grisham, Economic Development Director, and what I'm going to talk about a little bit, I know that you all received a letter yesterday. I've been involved with the, really, we started out as the Economic Impact Study Committee to look at the economic impact of low lake levels here in Lake Granberry, and I was asked as the Economic Development Director to search out a firm to perform such a task, and I'll talk a little bit about what it entails, just kind of give you a little background. As you know, an economic impact study typically is just simply to look at what kind of impact an event or project, or, you know, basically what kind of numbers are involved in any kind of downturn, or any kind of, you know, tourism, could range from anything, just basically looking at economic impact. Specifically for this type of study, you would be looking for impacts on visitor spending, on ad valorem property tax values, sales tax collections, you know, it's, you know, quality of life is difficult sometimes to look at, but it is important because obviously we depend on second homeowners, and lakefront living is one of our key attributes. So, the firm that I sought out, and I believe is probably the best group in the state who's qualified, and you've got, I believe, their proposal, is TXP Consulting out of Austin. TXP also did a similar study for Burnett and, I think it's Lano? 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 Which one, Judge?
Lano.
I think Lano.
You speak Texans, yeah. But anyway, I have a copy if you haven't seen it, but it was a very good study, and it was done last year, and, you know, I know from talking to a couple of people there in the community, it was very important for them, they've used it. The good thing about having these numbers is, you want to try to understand what kind of impact, I think that's our big concern is from here on out, what is, you know, if low lake levels continue, what is the, you know, the potential impact? I don't have to tell you as Commissioners that, you know, again, I mentioned ad valorem property tax values, there's typically a 15% premium on lakefront property. So, the study in, that was done for Burnett County showed that, I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 45% of all property values came from those lakefront properties in those counties. So, it's obviously important that, you know, we, you know, try to understand the economics. Also, as part of this study, we would do a business survey, trying to, what they did in Burnett County also, in Lano County, was to, you know, how are businesses affected? You know, right now, you talk to boat owners, you talk to, you know, certain businesses are directly impacted more quickly, but eventually, it can have a ripple effect. You know, when you throw a rock in the water, you see that ripple begin to spread out. So, they would look at that. You know, the study is, again, it's $37,500. Already, we've had $15,000 committed to the study. You know, we have multiple groups involved, and I'll, if any of them want to speak at all, I'd be happy to let them do that. But, you know, the main thing, again, is economic impact is, it gives us something tangible to go out and talk to the community. This is what we're looking at. And you, as a Commissioner, could say, if we look at low levels five years and 10 years, here's what the potential impact is on ad valorem property values, so that you can say, you know, what we, you know, this is an impact, because you obviously have to continue to provide the same type of services, but you could potentially lose value and then have to look at tax increases. So, certainly, that's a part of it. Visitor spending, that was a big part of the study. Obviously, Granberry is a big tourism community, and the lake is obviously a big part of that. Really, again, an economic impact is quantify. You know, you want to have some tangible numbers to say, here, you know, and take that out and be able to educate the public, here's what we're looking at, and here's what it means to you. So, if you have any questions, I'll answer about the study, or, is Joe?
I have you.
Oh, there he is, right there. I'll let Joe chime in, and then I'll be here for questions.
Okay. Joe Williams?
Good morning, Commissioners. Judge Cochrane, how y'all doing this morning? Like Joey spoke about, as most of you know, of course, we started forming this Economic Impact Committee about six weeks ago, and most of the county Commissioners have actually been to these committees in the weekly meetings that we've had. Three weeks ago, LGWA formed an Environmental Impact Committee, and what we did is, we decided that we wanted to try to go ahead and package the environmental with the economical. So, when we go to TCEQ and we go to the case hearings down there, that we will package this together. We believe that one intertwines with the other. In other words, one will actually back up one side, and the other will back up the other. An environment, I'm sorry, Environmental Impact Study will allow our science team to study the effects of the environment caused by low flows and low water levels experienced here on Lake Granberry. We believe this study will show that low water levels will increase dramatically concentrations of undesirable bacteria such as E. coli, harmful chlorides and phosphates, and precipitates increases in golden algae. As you know, the Hood County, the city of Granberry, LGWA, and others will be parties to the case when TCEQ Commissioners begin their decision process in regards to increasing or not the BRA's water permitting. At this time, the environmental study, along with the economic study results, which we will believe will show be detrimental to Hood County, the city of Granberry, and Lake Granberry, will be presented to TCEQ. Our science team for the environmental study includes Dr. Dan Rokey, PhD in Oceanography. He's a professor, of course, at A&amp;M, and most have seen him speak here a couple of times. His expertise is in field studies, lab experiments, numerical modeling situations that address lower food web ecology in ecosystems, i.e. golden algae. Attorney Rick Lowry, of course, he's attorney for Friends of the Brazos. He has a degree in chemical engineering from Berkeley, he has a law degree from UT. Myself, I actually have a degree from A&amp;M in Animal Science, Bachelor's of Science from Gary Newton, who is, I think, present out here. He's a stakeholder in the watershed protection program. He's going to be our information guy. There's a lot of data that the WPP has already taken from previous years, and so we'll be able to utilize that data and then also add that to our portfolio as far as we go forward. Attorney Alan Thorpe, he's a retired attorney who specializes in personal injury cases, including tort and toxic tort litigation. David Haley, president of Acuity. He's a consulting firm that takes complex technical issues and makes them understandable, budget and defines a solution, then oversees their implementation. Company projects have included such names as Exxon, Cisco Systems, University of Texas, Texas Health Resources. As you can see, we have an excellent science and legal team already at hand. Tomorrow evening, at the American Town Hall, David Haley will be presenting our goals and objectives of the environmental study. We're looking at Anna Labs as our, of Kilgore, to provide the licensed technicians for sampling and analytical data, and their costs, we're trying to get those costs available to us by tomorrow night. We've had a couple of meetings with them. So, as you can see, we've got our environmental team in place, we're ready to go start taking samplings, and hopefully have all this data available as we go forward into next fall with TCEQ. So, what we'd like, you said, we'd like to go ahead and ask, you know, to go ahead and have both these studies together, done together, so that one will complement the other. When the petition that I think all of you have seen was delivered yesterday, we want to thank Dominic Ng for actually putting this petition together and delivering those. That was done late yesterday because we were a little bit behind trying to get the petition together, and I wanted to add one more thing to that petition. There's a lot of signatures on that petition, and we had calls and emails yesterday that we had other folks, businesses, and other individuals in town that wanted to sign petition, but could not get to, over there to Joey's and over there to the EDC, you know, office to be able to sign that. So, yesterday afternoon, I went ahead and put a petition online, and I have the results of that petition of 8:30 this morning, that's why it's running late. We have 300 signatures to add to that list, and I want to present to you, there's actually comments in the signatures of this petition, and I would like to read you just two of them to kind of give you an idea of what the folks here in Hood County are actually saying about Lake Granberry and the conditions right now. Let me, the first one I wanted to read says, "Signs of both economic and environmental effect can be seen by the naked eye in Granberry. Our stures are closing, wildlife dependent on the water have been affected, and the mental stress of the citizens have been overwhelming. Please assist in reviving our community physically and healthy." The one I really liked, and there's a bunch of them, and like I said, I'll leave you comments of the first 100, and if you want more, we'll give you more. This comment, I think, just hits its home, really hits at home. "Living on Lake Granberry used to be magical. Without water, the magic is gone." As you can see, you know, Lake Granberry is very magical. I think we would like to get the water back on it, and in our petition, of course, we're asking to support our studies, both the environmental and, of course, the economical study, and at some point, we would like to come back to the court and ask for actually some type of fund, you know, funds from the county itself in this petition. Are there any questions?
Any questions for either Joey or Joe? And I do want to publicly recognize the letters that we got with the signatures on it, so.
Thank you.
I do have a question. There's nothing wrong with a letter, other than the signatures come to the Commissioners' Court and go to City Council all the time.
Yes.
I don't see a petition yet to Governor Perry.
We could actually, we could actually prepare a petition to Governor Perry. I don't see a problem with that. I think what we would like to do, Commissioner Berry, we appreciate, you know, obviously that idea, we are in really, you know, fast-paced trying to get this going, this particular petition. The reason being is, it's going to take, as far as economic study, it'll take about two, two and a half months. So, we're on a timeline, number one. We're trying to get samplings at least over three months, if not four months, off of the environmental study. So, we're trying to push this along as quick as we can. We can go ahead and get a petition to, you know, we've written letters to the governor, I've called the governor's office back, in regards to those letters, they won't return my phone calls.
Okay, that's where my concern is. I mean, you have a study that was already done by Grant, that Gary's in the audience, he's said on that as a stakeholder. James McCausen was the county's representative. We already have a lot of those notes that should help us for the environmental side of this. But I go back to, you know, we're fracturing some foundations.
Right.
I mean, when you read some of the comments that these folks have wrote in their petition, I don't think they understand that no matter who sits at this table, or who sits at City Council table, we don't pull the plug or flip the switch to fill up Lake Granberry.
Correct.
We're all in this together.
Right.
And we're fighting amongst ourselves to an extent, and we all need to get back to the same focus. We've kicked over rocks at NRC, we've kicked over rocks at Luminate. I, for one, am satisfied that they have enough water for one and two reactor. Now, what we're really discussing here is the future water rights that the BRA is arguing about, that we need to be ready to go down to TCEQ in August or so and argue for those 400,000 acre feet.
Right.
And then if they, if Luminate doesn't come on board, then I can't sit here as a Commissioner representing the Court of the County and tell you that I would support three and four, because if this is a new norm, we can't afford what three and four will do to us.
Correct. And you're exactly right. What the court needs to realize, we're fighting this on two fronts. One is current conditions, and then future conditions or possible conditions, and it's very complex. And so, we're coming here today, we're doing the impact study, both studies in regards to future rights, water rights, what the BRA is asking for. That doesn't solve our problem that's currently going on, and Commissioner Berry is addressing that. It is a hard fight. We're trying every angle that we can fight to try to get the water back on to Lake Granberry. I think it would be very great idea to go ahead and petition Governor Perry in regards to the existing conditions, and then we have to keep working forward on the studies as far as future, you know, water rights with the BRA.
He just reappointed six members, and he appointed four interim members.
Right.
Without even, I don't know, I never saw a comment or a public comment asking for any input from the general public.
Right.
And as I made a comment to two different groups yesterday, I don't understand, as someone that's appointed to represent a group, just like this group here, the City Council, school board members, when they're elected to represent a group, the people need to explain to him that the appointee that he's appointed for Hood County is not coming and sitting there and listening to the concerns. Now, whether he agrees or disagrees is his business, but he's not even listening to the concerns to take them back, that I know of.
Right. I would say it's a sad state of affairs when a authority such as the Brazos River, they have a bill down there that Senator Birdwell and Representative Kefir have introduced that will state audit the BRA. They've been around for 80 years, and I don't think they've ever been audited, as far as a state organization coming to audit them, they've only been internally audited. It's a sad state of affair. This is the problem with the BRA. They're appointed by the governor, and they're sovereign to lawsuits, and Brazos Electric tried to sue them, the judge dropped the case because they claimed the BRA was sovereign. And so, it's very difficult dealing with them. I can tell you, and I'll be first to you, Chris Adams, who is, you know, on the board at the BRA, I've been with LGWA for four years, we have never, ever talked to Chris Adams. He's never come to us, they, when we asked for them to come, they don't come and listen to us. They don't represent us, they don't represent Hood County.
But why is that right? If you want to change something in government, there's where you, and obviously, that's going to show you the bureaucracy at the state level, if there's 254 counties and you got one county crying, do they even care? So, I don't want people leaving this room thinking the Commissioners' Court, or the City Council, or anybody that's here, and, you know, the scope, I read the scope when I got this letter, I see some advantages. If this is the new norm, you need to know what to build and not build, and what to, how many people we need to start looking at cutting back.
Right.
Because I need to know what's going to happen to tax base in three years, five years, seven years, and 10 years, if this is a new norm. But at the same time, I do think, you know, you need to outreach, you know, this group needs to make sure that everyone that's putting money in has a voice at the table.
Right.
So that we are all getting the same thing, and we're focusing on the future water rights, not about, there's nobody going to go to Possum Kingdom and flip a switch and fill Granberry up. I mean, if they think that, there, that's not going to happen tomorrow.
Right.
The only thing that's going to fill Granberry up in one day is God himself.
That's true.
Now, that doesn't mean BRA won't let it out tomorrow.
Right.
And there's the thing we ought to be fighting with, is their water management, they need an audit because they have not been audited, but at the same time, without letting everything that we're going to use in June or August down at TCEQ.
Right.
On one hand, they tell you this is a 60-year water plan, but yet it's not funded by the local legislation, we, Birdwell and Kefir and all those legislators. So, you can't have it both ways. You can't make me live by a 60-year water plan and still not fund it when it's coming from the State House.
Correct. Correct. I appreciate it.
Everybody understand, we're not opposed to helping or working on this.
I understand.
We're not the devil there. Okay?
I would agree, our attack to, our attack point with Mr. Perry needs to be concerning the definition of the word sovereignty of that organization.
Correct.
Its independence, its inability to be questioned, it appears, and I would go so far as to say that I would have serious question as to someone from our own community and Mr. Adams being appointed to that committee and never having interacted with anyone other than the newspaper.
Right.
With this organization.
Right.
You know, it shows either, I don't know which it is, I don't think on Mr. Adams' party, it's a lack of courage, I know him to be a courageous man.
Right.
But it does show a definition of sovereignty that frankly scares me to death.
Correct.
As far as our ability to do anything concerning it.
Right. Yes, sir. I agree. We would like for you, if you could attend possibly tomorrow night, you know, at the American Town Hall for our normal economic study, we'll get more into the environmental. We would love to get the county on board, you know, going forward when it comes to the future water rights of the BRA. This is, it's a tough fight, I will tell you. It's quite a challenge, to tell you the truth.
And Steve and I are certainly, I don't think I'm speaking for him, but we're certainly not talking against you here.
Oh, I understand.
Joe, we're just bringing up points of interest where, from our experience, we know perhaps have the most impact.
Yeah.
And that is going directly to the top in numbers and do it regularly.
Right.
To where he gets sick of hearing about it, to the extent that he does something about it.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to kind of reiterate what Steve said. I don't think this is understood by the general public at large, is that it's the ad valorem taxes that's going, that's my big thing, it's...
Not just on the lakefront, either.
That's right. It's going to affect everybody. So, there's, matter of fact, I was talking to somebody from the city the other day, and there's people that live on the lake that want it to go down so that their taxes will go down.
Right. That's...
You know, so, and, but when their taxes go down, either we have to do major cuts or people's, other people's taxes, non-lakefront waterfront homeowners, theirs is going to go up.
Right.
So, that's, you know, that's my big deal right there. I don't want the county to suffer because of this, and it's suffering.
Right. Well, and I've always told, you know, the committees, I've told the waterfront association that even if we stop or slow down the BRA from getting more water rights, we still have a crucial problem here on Lake Granberry. I mean, it's, you know, it is crucial, because when they changed the management five years ago, it completely changed the flow and the complexity of the river system in Lake Granberry.
And denying future rights of sales to the BRA doesn't do a thing to bring the lake up an inch.
It doesn't. No. But, you know, it stops, you know, future damages, you know, and who knows what that is? Because their WMP doesn't tell you what the damage will be for their water rights.
Well, I think, Joe, what you've done here is that, I've been here since the lake was brought in.
Yes.
I remember the river.
Right.
And the fact is that, as long as we had a generating plan at PK, we only had one or two issues where we had this kind of issue every year.
Correct.
And we've had droughts in the past.
Right.
I talked to a guy yesterday in a meeting that went to school, was here before I was, and he's a realtor, and he's in the room today, and he's got more facts than I do. But the fact is, we need partners in this deal. And by going to Luminate, I think we've turned those rocks over. I do know from doing some analysis that if you did take Squaw Creek down about two and a half feet, if their board would allow it, it would only bring Granberry up one foot.
That's it.
So, that's not the save all, but I'm asking for an olive branch from their management and for them to be a team player.
Right.
Because we've been a good team player in this county to their 500 employees that live here.
Right.
We don't see ad valorem taxes off Comanche Peak, but we're always the first to step to the plate and speak in favor of expansion.
Right.
Well, that's where we've asked them. Now, we go to the other entities, the Realtors Association, the Chamber, and the county and the city, and you work through one organization such as Joy, where we've done environmental before with EPA, and we try to have the scope that reflects and helps everybody.
Right.
So that when we spend a taxpayer's dollar, it's going to a good cause.
Right.
But the fight really is on the future water rights that's coming up in June, July, and August.
Correct. And there it really is. I do want to comment about Luminate. I know they've been very good to this community, and with Comanche Peak over there, you know, they've always had a presence here, and since I've been here for six years, I've known of their presence for a long time, and they do a lot for the community. I would ask them, you know, if they really want to help, is to be able to come in and help with the impact studies, and, you know, to help the community out there, to be able to find out what this will, how this will impact the community as far as environmentally, economically, and I think they would be a great tool to have on board with us also. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for either Joey or Joe? Anyone?
Do you have a timeline on how, I mean, you said three or four months, but when you start, and I'm only reading letters and emails that I see from Bryce, but y'all have met for five weeks, when do we push the boat off the cliff?
The economic study, two months?
Yep.
Two months, and environmental study, that's up to us. We wanted to get sampling for three to four months. If we need to cut it down, that's fine, but we have sampling that's already from the WPP that's been done in the past. The only thing with WPP that is one of the issues is they measure a lot of that sampling when the lake is full, or basically, you know, level, and now we're able to go back and go ahead and get samplings now, when the, you know, when it's, the samplings we think will be more concentrated. And so, it's critical we get out on the lake and get these done, and we'd like to do samplings once a month for at least two or three months.
The only thing I'd say about that is it was done by the BRA, and it was done with state funding.
That's right.
So, they cannot hardly argue that when we get to TCEQ.
That's why we want to do what they have and then show what we have as the low water is concerned, both of them. So, yes, it is key.
Joe, let me tell you this, why don't you, you know, you and I talked about this, you know, several weeks ago, so why don't you get on the next agenda and work on the funding part of it?
Okay. And I appreciate, Judge, for allowing us to come in quickly today and get this on, and we'll get back on the agenda, and if you, whoever can be there tomorrow night, we should have, you know, pretty well the total cost tomorrow night, I believe, at the American Town Hall. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Bob, do we have any special presentations?
Judge, Commissioners, we're here to celebrate four people and their anniversaries with the county. The first is Gary Tellison, who works in maintenance, and he's been with the county for five years. Second is David Hankins, and he's been with the county for five years. Oh, okay. He's not here, we'll make sure it gets for him. The next person is Anna Rubleoso, who's been with the county for 10 years. We'll get back to Roger. The last two, last person is Lee Waters, who's been with the county road ops for 10 years.
Thank you, Judge.
That it, Bob? All right. The next item is, I know I have several forms filled out for people who want to address the Commissioners Court on any item, agenda item, but if there's any more, would you raise your hand and, and a sheriff will give you a form to fill out? Is anyone else? Because I have four right now. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Next is the consent agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Item E, Judge, please.
Commissioner, okay. Pull item E off, which is, we'll talk about that a little later. Any other item to be pulled up?
F, Dixie Lee's here.
Pull item F off, too?
Did you see Dixie?
Yeah.
Oh, that's you.
Okay. All right, so-
Hearing none other, Judge, y'all make a motion. We pursue, we approve, approve consent agenda A through I, please.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, this is for Linda Mailand to attend a school. Linda, you want to come up and tell us about it?
Yes. Texas Veterans Commission trains the county veteran service officers twice a year at our conference. This spring conference is paid for by T V C, and it's held in San Antonio. We have a lot of things that we need to address because there's a lot of changes in the V A. So this training is required for all of us to maintain our accreditation. Accreditation allows me to get into the V A's secure database and look at veterans' records, and I'm able to, to give them status on that. So this training is pretty important, so.
Linda was just in attendance, Judge, and just asked to talk about it. So I'll make a motion, we approve the request.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan for, to allow Linda Mailand, the county veteran service officer, to attend training in San Antonio from May the 21st through 23rd, travel day on the 20th.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah.
We-
We got, we got to vote.
Got to vote. So is there, have that motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Is any further discussion on this? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Item number F was pulled off also. This is the approved request from Dixie Lee Hedgecock, the Marketing Director at Lake Granbury Medical Center, to include flyers at the senior center, senior circle prom anniversary event, the upcoming screenings. Dixie, you want to come up and tell us about this?
Good morning. In effort to keep our community alive and well and engaged and improve our quality of life, we have lots of upcoming events. Number one is the senior circle prom. We have over 2,000 residents in our community that take advantage of this program. It's usually $15 a year, and once a year, we run a special where it's $10, and you even get a ticket to senior prom. We know of members who've saved $100, $200 on eyeglass lenses. They've also saved thousands of dollars on hearing aids, and that's a pretty good return on investment for a $10 annual membership. So that's the first thing. The other thing is to make certain that your employees of the county are aware of the upcoming seminars that we have that are free to the community, one of which is a cardiac screening, which includes blood pressure, glucose, cholesterol, one-on-one with a physician, and height and weight and B M I. So important for your employees to know and also to share to their constituents in the county.
You have to have a date to go to the prom, Dixie?
No, sir. This is long formal, so they really deck out. In fact, we had somebody who brought their prom picture from 28 years ago and replicated the photo as a married couple all these many years later. So it was pretty exciting.
All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve this request from Dixie Lee. Motion made by Commissioner Roan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion on this? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And thank you for that, too. Don't get that much. Okay. The next item on the agenda is subdivision roads and plaits.
Morning, Judge Cochrane, Commissioners. Hood County has received a petition from the homeowners that are but Randy Court. Randy Court is located in the northern section of Hood County in Precinct Four. It is a platted road within the Moore Estates development. The roadway is 2,440 feet in, in length, 60-foot right-of-way. And I'm presenting this to the court to, to make a decision whether we, we take this road and, and put it on the county road system.
Okay. I have right here three letters in support of this. They, they said that they just want written testimony only. They do not want to speak. I don't guess you want to speak, do you? No, just, okay. But there's three here in favor of it, so.
Judges, for the record, this, this has been about an 18-month process. They go through the petition phase. I think the three or four that are in attendance were the ones that went out and gathered petitions. This was a development that was put in in the early 70s, and so I make a motion that we approve the request from Road Operations.
Okay. A motion made by Commissioner Berry to have a second.
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion on this? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next is development and compliance.
Judge, we ask that you hold a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the site development plan for the M W S Properties LLC located at 3103 James Road. This is the one that has, has been to court prior. It went through Development Commission in February, and I'll, I'll state, as I stated last time, the Development Commission does recommend approval of this site plan.
Okay. I think we have, Stephen Walt wants to speak.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners.
Wait just a sec. Wait a minute. We're going to open a public hearing, then you can speak. A public hearing is now open to consider this James Road-
Project.
Project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I live at 3102 James Road. We're all aware that there's drainage issues on that road. Six or, five or six people spoke at the last hearing about this. Had several meetings with Don Lenny and Commissioner Tout. Last meeting was, stated that my house was built to the wrong elevation, which I proved was not true. It was actually a foot above, almost a foot above what's required. I showed a survey from a registered surveyor, and the next day, the county sent a survey crew out, private survey crew out, to survey my property without even notifying me. So I was a little upset about that. I think it was a waste of money. And we've had meetings, there's different ideas, it's, it's our fault, it's the builder's fault, it's the county's fault. The county designed and built the drainage ditch. The builder didn't do it, I didn't do it, none of the other residents did it. So I have nothing against Mr. Stead's development. The only concern is that additional water runoff from all those structures coming, comes across the road on the our side of the street. Now, I've showed Commissioners back in 2007 the problems. We've shot, the county has shot elevations of the drainage ditch at least three times that I'm aware of. Doesn't change because we haven't done anything. So my only concern is, are we going to do anything about the drainage? I mean, Don came out, shot grades. He said some of the houses, there's no drainage, it's level. So what's the fix for that? It's not going to go away. The more we develop, it's only going to get worse.
That's right.
We have any answers? It's been a month. Commissioner Tout and I have had multiple meetings, some good, not, some not so good. And I just want some answers.
Right now, this is all about the property across the street.
And that property affects my property.
But, I mean, he, he's shown us a drainage plan where he's not diverting any water that would go on other property onto yours.
Well, that water comes across under the street into a bar ditch right in front of my house, which currently now is maxed out. Now, that, when it rains, that land, the water lays in there. When you put all those structures on there, you're going to have that runoff. There's very little land left on that property after it's developed. So all that's runoff. There's nothing's going to be absorbed, very little's going to be absorbed into that ground. So it's got to be additional runoff. One of my concerns is the fact that the county doesn't follow its own regulations. This was, this hearing was not properly advertised.
I think the hearing that originally was properly advertised, is that not true, Mr. Lenny? The first one?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
No, sir.
The second one, that's the one that, and I apologize for that. I put it on too quick. That's the first time we, we run two-two vote, and I thought that we could put it on, but from TAC, they said we had to, so we did the 15 days again for this one.
But it was not posted on a property to be developed, which is in your regulations. It has to be in the newspaper, and it has to be posted on the property to be developed. It's in the Hood County Development Regulations.
Mr. Lenny?
According to county rules, the county hasn't set a rule for plant, or placing a, a notice on the property. We've never done it. The county's never set a, a set of rules for it.
So why is it in there saying it has to be done, but you don't do it?
It says according to county rules. They've never set a rule.
So we're still back to square one. We're not doing anything. Is that it?
Well, I've talked to Mr. Stead this week. I called Will and I asked him, would he be willing to put a grate in the driveway so that no water off the roof of the driveway, it's going to be in the ditch on the east side of that, of that complex?
Which has a culvert that runs under James Road, comes out on the other side.
I understand, but how is it, how, how can I tell a gentleman he can't build on his own property?
I'm not telling him, I'm not saying I don't want the man to build. I'm saying we need to just, address the drainage issue.
Well, then, like Commissioner Tout said, we have two issues here.
Yep. Well, two issues only because there's already a drainage problem, without, without the addition of that.
But the drainage he's talking about is up above where the, where the building's going to be. So there shouldn't be any extra water coming into that culvert.
No, it's not up above. It's close to the middle of it. It's where the two duplexes and the seplex is going to be.
It's going to be up above the building. I'm out there, I've seen it, and I know what I'm talking about.
I think every, every court member's driven out there and taken a look, taken a look at it. The problem is that not, not many of us are hydrology engineers, so we're not really qualified to answer that question that you asked.
Okay. Well, I was told there was going to be an engineering study done.
Who, who said that?
Commissioner Tout, you said you were going to get an engineer to look at it.
I, I had Don look at it. I don't, I don't know who all he's had look at it.
Anybody look?
Yeah, we looked at it. Looked at it in 2007.
Okay. We looked at it in 2007, we looked at it in 2013, and we have done what?
Yeah, but the problem, as the judge said, I, I asked him to take me out, and we drove all over. I have a couple places that have the same issue in my precinct. We can't get on private property. And the only fix I see between, I believe it's your house, I'm not sure which house you're in, but the two houses, there's not a lot of elevation. You have to admit, there's not a lot of elevation on your slab site. But to get between the two houses is private property. I mean, we, you know, we did, we corrected a problem in Meander Estates because we went back and asked the two landowners to give a lateral easement, and the developer went back and put a retaining wall in to move the water behind, which would catch that water at the creek behind you back there, or the floodplain behind you. But Don just can't take his men and go out on private property and start digging a ditch. And the roadway, as we just said in the previous case, was a 60-foot right-of-way or 50-foot right-of-way. That's the only right-of-way we can get in. And, and, you know, I have people all the time that call me and say, well, just dig the ditch deeper. Well, that's fine if you want mosquitoes and stag at the stand, but the culverts are all at the, at the certain level that's been concreted into the driveways. And one reason, and I happened to be at the Development Commission meeting the morning this came up, before I even knew it was a drainage issue, the Development Commission didn't want five driveways on James Road. They asked Mr. Stead to consolidate his duplex driveways into two-to-one so that we'd help on A, traffic and line of sight, before we ever knew about the drainage issue, or I ever knew about the drainage issue. But, but I think what Mr. Stead's trying to do, he's going above and beyond by putting a drainage grate in to at least not let that water sheet, sheets of water run across James Road to add to the other side.
Does that now when that bar ditch on that side ever flows?
Well, the item is, we're in a public hearing, I think that the public hearing is now over with, and, and we need to vote in what we're going to do on the site development plan for these M W S properties. Do I have a motion to approve this? Motion made by Commissioner Tout to have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Did you oppose?
Yes, I did.
Okay. We have four positives and one negative vote on that, and the vote carried. Next, who's have a public hearing to take appropriate action on a variance of Section One Development Permit Regulations, Article Five. Public hearing is now called.
Judge, this is a replat that went through the city of Granbury. It's located in Walnut Creek Estates, which is, which is partly in the E T J of the city of Granbury. They reviewed this during their D R C meeting, and in order to, to move forward, they do request, or they're asking for a variance or a decision from the court on, on this property. It's, it's two lots, and the, and the owner is wanting to make three lots out of it, and the sole purpose of making this third lot is to have a buffer between, he lives on the other side of the roadway, the opposite side of the roadway from this, and he's wanting some kind of a buffer between his cell here, or his home, and these two lots that he's going to sell.
Okay. Since we're in a public hearing, does any citizen wish to comment on this?
Judge, I'll make a comment. Is this A M U D's water and sewer?
Yeah, yes, sir. Well, it's, it's water. They have public water, I'm sorry, I didn't say, they have public water. These two lots will require onsite sewage facilities.
But they do have municipal water, someone bringing water to them?
Yeah.
So, that meets our regulations as far as James does for the state, 'cause it's still over. Is that correct, James?
State, yes.
Okay. State, it's under state qualifies then, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else wish to comment on this? Then the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve this Development Permit Regulations, Article 5, Walnut Creek.
I'll make a second.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut, seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Now, we need to set a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on a replat of Lot 904, our Unit 8 pecan plantation.
Judge, the staff recommends setting a public hearing for the May 28th Commissioners' Court Meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry to have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Lenny. Budget and finance, another one, number one is considered line item changes?
Judge, Commissioners, there are several budget amendments that have been requested. One is from the sheriff. It has to do with Fund 54, which is specifically for the DARE program, wanting to move $500 into supplies out of travel and training. Constable Precinct 3 has asked to move $260 out of books and publications into telecommunications. He's anticipating, because of the Verizon AirCard, he will need a little more telecommunications for the balance of this year. Constable Precinct 3 is also asking to move $1,440 into his fuel account. He does not take advantage of the county-provided health insurance, and that $1,440 would be the amount that has not been spent so far this year that was budgeted. The fourth item has to do with the 1115 Medicaid waiver. This is actually a pass-through from the hospital. The county is in possession of funds of $37,453.50. Some time ago, the hospital district elected to cooperate with the hospital and participate in the 1115 Medicaid waiver program, and as a result of that, the lease agreement with the hospital was renegotiated, and they began to pay additional monies to the county so that the county could make that payment to the Texas Department of Health and Human Services on their behalf. But I would request that you approve these budget line amendments as presented. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to talk with you about them.
Do we know how much fuel money Constable Precinct 3 started out with? And do you have that off the top of your head?
My guess would be $2,000, Commissioner. I'd have to check that to be sure. But that would've been $2,000. It may have been 2,500.
Mike, you said 2,000? Okay.
But then once...
Make a motion to accept the budget amendments.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Dever to approve the budget line item amendments. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Payment of bills?
Judge and Commissioners, the total of these bills come to $602,620.50. The larger items in there represent quarterly fees that are to be remitted from the treasurer to the state comptroller. Also, this $37,453.50 that was just discussed, which is the pass-through from the hospital, I believe there are specific requirements on how that is to be paid. I think it's some type of electronic funds transfer to the Texas Department of Health and Human Services, and I'll have to work with the treasurer on working out the details of how we get that done. To Chris Ladue, $23,587 is coming out of Fund 55 for the sheriff to replace the DVRs, as has been discussed and approved. To Ben E. Keith Company, $14,326.60 for jail groceries. To the firm of Graves Humphreys Stall Limited, they provide services of collecting past-due amounts for our justices of the peace office, and that $16,909.21 represents the quarterly fees that they have collected. To GT Distributors, Inc., $15,058.62 for the purchase of Body Armor, the ballistic vest. To Hood County Adult Probation, $17,025. This is a budgeted supplement to help defray the cost of the groundskeeping that adult probation provides. To Texas Association of Counties, $15,222.59 for unemployment insurance premiums. And to Somerville County, $56,582. That represents two months, February and March, for the charges of out-of-county inmate custody that they provide. To Tyler Technologies Incorporated, $52,853. This is the progress payment on the general ledger system conversion. I have provided payment warrants for each item on the list. I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have about them, but I would ask your approval to pay these bills.
Okay, do we have a motion for approving the bills?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan. Have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? How much did you say, by the way? Let me ask that question. What is the total bill amount?
Well, as revised, Judge, it's $602,620.50.
Yeah, because mine says four something.
I apologize.
This is in that of?
There was, there was a late revision. It's necessary for us to go ahead and approve the payment of the comptroller transfer. If we pay that after April 30th, we don't get the percentage discount. I have a revised form, and if I may, I'll just bring it to you.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Lenny, is considering take appropriate action regarding the funding of boiler replacement out of Fund 55. Thank you.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Had a failure of a boiler at our law enforcement center that we need to replace, looking at $37,710 replacement cost. And I ask that you fund that out of Fund 55?
Question on that boiler that went out? I went out there and looked at that thing, and y'all are gonna try to repair that old one for backup, right?
Yes, sir.
Just in case, 'cause we got another 1994 boiler waiting to go to, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we do. God dang it.
We're gonna try to repair the old one, put a new one in, repair the old one, keep it for standby.
We're going to attempt to.
Nineteen years, I think we got our use out of that one, though.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve out of Fund 55.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry and seconded by Commissioner Dever to approve this purchase out of Fund 55 for the replacement of the boiler. Any further discussion?
Do you have a time on this that you can let the sheriff know so he can work that out? I mean, it's gonna be within the next week or so?
They said the maximum lead time would be three weeks, but they're gonna try to intercept one that's going to a new construction project.
Okay.
How long would it take to install it?
A day.
Any further discussion?
Any interruption to your operation there with prisoners? Sure?
Well, what Tim put together is a splicing field from, from the ones in the front. I guess the, to bring, pipe the water all the way from the front to the back to help in the kitchen, and so we had a few problems over the weekend that Tim was addressing, so we're getting by. So, we can hang on for a little longer.
The same is true with the installation, Tim.
Excuse me?
Same will be true for the installation, too. You won't be totally shut down for a day.
No, sir. What we've done is, is connect the piping from the boilers in the north side of the building with the piping running into the kitchen and laundry. The requirement is actually for 140-degree water in the kitchen and laundry, but we can't get that from those boilers because they service the cells, and we can't turn them up that high. So, we've got 120-degree water going in there, which they're being able to use for the time being because they have a booster heater in the kitchen to work on their dishwasher. So, we're, we're hitting 180 degrees on the dishwasher like we're supposed to.
Okay.
And that, that will be able to be, continue to be used until the boiler, the new boiler is in place.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Considering take appropriate action on regarding the printer needed for the county attorney's office, and she just stepped out.
Skip it, go to the next one.
Pardon?
Skip it and go to the next, or she is.
There she comes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Since the beginning of January, we have had, my investigator has, his printer has not been functioning in the office. It was a, not a commercial-grade printer, it was one that we, I guess they had picked up at Staples or something, and he has the need to be able to have a reliable printer for printing the prints in color. Jackie Solomon recommended a network printer. Apparently, that's something they were trying to go to so that various people in the office can print to the same printer, it's network-capable, which is why it's a little bit more expensive than just your average off-the-shelf printer. Pete uses this printer to, to print up his warrants and also print up his lineups, photo lineups that have to be in color and all that, so. Jackie suggested that we do this network printer, it's about $600. He did say, he recommended this particular Lexmark printer because it is more durable, it will, it should last, and it should make it worth its while rather than just buying a cheap off-the-shelf printer. So, that, we're asking for that for the office. I believe this is the first fund expenditure we've asked for. We've been trying to take care of business with what we've got, so we would appreciate your consideration of being able to get my investigator a printer that works.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a printer for the county attorney's office out of Fund 55.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan to have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
We have an old printer that makes a great paperweight, if anybody would like it.
Boat anchor, if we had water in the lake.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, consider and take appropriate action to cancel or reschedule the July 9th, 2013 Commissioners' Court Meeting due to a conflict with the North Texas, North and East Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association Annual Conference and Business Meeting. And these, this has to do with our required education that we're, that we're mandated by the state to do, as Ms. Mallon is also, so, but they just happened, this is the first time I can remember in the past two years that we've had to reschedule a meeting because in being in conflict with them, but the July the 9th is a Monday, and then...
July 9th is a Tuesday.
That's Tuesday.
That's our meeting date.
Okay, it's reschedule it, and I would love to see it rescheduled to the Monday just before that at nine o'clock, so that once that's over with, then we can all go to the meeting, or whoever's going.
Where is the meeting?
It's in Conroe.
Outside of Houston?
Yeah. Montgomery County.
What I need, we need to do in the motion is to let you work with the district clerk to see if we're having jury that week. If we're having jury, then we need to check JP. If we're having JP, then we need to go to the courthouse.
Right.
But my motion would be to consider to move the meeting from the 9th to the 8th and allow the judge to work out the designated location.
I agree. Second.
All right, have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan to move the July 9th meeting to July the 8th, and for the county judge to find a, a place to have the meeting, maybe here or wherever, but anyway. Is there any further discussion on this? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Considering take appropriate action regarding fuel and ammunition equipment for Constable Precinct 1.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come forward and make this request. Each one of you, I've placed just a single sheet of paper, just broke it down into individual items and the anticipated cost. Are there any specific questions about the request?
Yeah, one of the questions is, is that I know you've had to, you've had to come and get fuel once before for $500, and now that's gone, and just, can you kind of go over how this fuel is being spent for us?
Oh, yes, sir. And I think it's been covered in the court numerous times, the duties and requirements of the constable's office, not only throughout the state of Texas, but more specifically here in Hood County, and requirements. The geographical size of Hood County Precinct 1 has been mentioned quite a lot. That is one part of the consideration, but really not a major part, 'cause each constable is required to deliver civil paper and conduct law enforcement activities in all precincts within the county. So, each constable's office would be required to travel to any part of the county. So, my geographical size, although it is a part of the fuel budget, it's, it's not individualized to my precinct. My initial budget was set at $2,000 by the court. When I took office, there was $1,500 available. That was addressed somewhat last year, prior to it. Has decided not to, to put any more resources available at that time because the budget was already set and that we'd approach it later on this year. We have come to the time through normal activities of the constable's office that those monies have been expended. There are no more monies available in my budget to be transferred over from line items that would not require later on in the year to come back to the court to request money for those expenditures of the basic required things to run the office. The money that I've put out there is, is just a budget estimation. Really, I've only got two months that I can look at on what I need. The month of January considered a lot of traveling for training and schools and so forth, so that's not a good month to look at the numbers. It's only had February and March. I used some of the other constables' budgets to look at what they required, and that's where I came up with the money, the request. Should suffice throughout the year, but there again, that's just an estimate. I don't know what the fuel costs, I don't know what the increases may be, you know, or what gas will cost in November of this year or May of this year.
You know, you said you had $2,000 at the first of the year, but then when you took over, there was $1,500 left?
No, sir, there's $2,000 at the onset of the budget, or it's put in there at $2,000, but it took over after there'd been one quarter. So, we started with a cash amount of $1,500 on January 1.
So, that quarter, somebody spent $500, is that right?
No, sir, the, the office wasn't separated out from Precinct 1 and Precinct 2, so Precinct 1 did not have a separate budget. The court just put that in the budget, 'cause it's a four-quarter budget.
I thought we split that, though. I thought we had a nine-month budget in place for JP 1 and Constable 1 that was in place, so I, I mean, Constable 1 and 2 at the time used his own budget, and then January, it was a nine-month budget, I believe.
That's correct.
So, there was how much money in that account at that time?
$1,500.
Okay.
Where did the 500?
But he's come for 500 more, so we've already put 500, so that would be 2,000.
So, what this is telling me then is if this 2650 is for the remaining five months, we can expect a budget request for somewhere around 5,500 or 6 grand.
Somewhere between 4,600 and 5,100 is the best I can estimate.
Which is still nearly twice what it's ever been.
No, sir. It's actually less, but you'd have to break out the existing budgets from the previous precinct as far as where Precinct 1 and 2 were combined.
Let's talk about the evidence locker and the gun cabinet, and the electronic stamp. I don't know, is there not electronic stamp in that office now?
We've been utilizing a stamp that Constable Hart had as a backup, a used part or whatever, should the one he's using right now go down. It requires us to use whiteout to mark out the, the office, the name, and the precinct number. So, each one of our court documents that we stamp, required to stamp that, contains whiteout on it. It's the same timestamp that was provided for the judge in Precinct 1. The reason why I waited this long to make the request is that's what I was advised to do after I took office, to make sure my office was equipped before I made any approaches back for additional equipment or anything, to make sure that we made one trip. That's why it's put in there right now instead of doing it at the first part of the year.
Is the evidence locker and the gun locker not one of the same?
No, sir, they're not. The gun locker secures weapons and ammunition. There's no chain of custody or chain of evidence required in there. The evidence locker will contain evidences or items taken from various scenes at the constable's work that require a documented chain of custody. So, there'll be two separate lockers, both contained within my locker inside of our office, our closet inside.
I have a question about that because the previous two constables that were in that office didn't have this. Why is it necessary that you have this?
Well, it'd be better that they speak on their behalf. On my behalf, it's not present, there's no place to store weapons, no place to store ammunition, safe place where I can secure it, and I have no place to store evidence at present. What they did with their evidence or their weapons or ammunition, I have no clue.
But I think they put it in a closet.
I can, I can say that there is a gun safe or a gun locker that Constable Hart utilizes now, and an evidence locker that he utilizes now. Possibly, they shared that one. I don't know that. I wouldn't anticipate that to be the case.
Is that a problem?
Is what a problem?
To share with, you're sharing offices. Is it a problem to share the gun safe?
Well, you'd have to ask Constable Hart if, if his position on that, my position on it, is that we both have our own separate offices, we both have separate weapons and ammunition that we utilize. His gun locker is not of sufficient size to store the weapons that I would put in and his weapons.
How many weapons do y'all have? How many weapons do y'all have?
Well, I have, I carry a sidearm, we carry shotgun, we have a rifle, any personal weapons I would carry that I'd utilize on a duty basis, and any ammunition that we have.
So as you say, in the closet, it's not big enough to handle two rifles, two shotguns, and two pistols?
Judge, what I'm saying is my office needs storage for the weapons, secure storage for the weapons, secure storage for the ammunition, and it needs an evidence locker to securely store the evidence. That's based upon what the other three constables' offices have, other constables' offices throughout the state of Texas, and I just come for the court, so that's what I need, and I leave it to the court to make a decision if that's available or not.
Any further questions for the constable on this?
Well, I'm new to the office as well as Joe is. He was told, one and two split, he could come to court and ask to get his office up to date. Some of his stuff I don't agree with, some of it I do. I think we need to start watching our fuel. He's asking for $2,650 for fuel, I'm gonna say let's give him $1,500 more, and he better start taking care of it.
Well, if I can't address that issue, if there's anybody in court that has seen any abuse in my office of fuel, I'll be happy to address that right now.
Well, I don't think they're saying that, Joe, but you just said yourself at the podium that y'all all deliver papers all over the county, and then when I monitor the other three constables' fuel, and we just, that's why I asked the question, Constable Three just have $2,000 to start out with, we just put $1,440 back in his. That's $3,440. What you're asking for makes you at $4,650.
As I said, that's a prediction. I've got two months to predict. My initial number was lower than that. I came up with the $2,600 number after meeting with Judge Cochran. My initial request was gonna be $1,500 to $2,000. We looked at basically what it might anticipate for the rest of the year, and to prevent having come back before the court again asking for it, that's the number we come up with.
I understand, I mean, and I appreciate that, but that tells me the Tahoes aren't getting very good fuel mileage, and we might, the court might have made a mistake buying Tahoes.
Well, actually, it's quite opposite. And I don't know if you guys have them in front of you or not, but if, if you took a look at the monthly reports that the constables submit that deals with the total miles driven, total gallons used, and the cost of the fuel, I think you'll find that the Tahoes, compared to fuel usage, is markedly better than the vehicles we're comparing them to. But the efficiency of the vehicle can't just be limited to the fuel economy, although that specific vehicle, not only in our, our office, but in the sheriff's office and in the police department here in Granbury, I think we'll find that the overall cost of the Tahoe is markedly competitive to any vehicle that's available out there at the moment. Fuel-wise and resale value-wise, dependability in the usage of the vehicle, so I would say, Commissioner, quite actually, you made an excellent decision in the choice of the vehicle.
I still don't understand that, I mean, and it's really, I hate to even argue about this amount of money, it's not a lot, but I don't understand the evidence locker when you have a secured closet. I thought that's what, when we opened the Justice Center, and we've had two of the constables go through that building, the reason I remember us buying one at Precinct Three for the constable, it was a Holycor door, and we'd gone in and retrofitted that in a storage building. But in this building itself, this is probably one of the most secure buildings in the whole county.
Yes, sir, and if I limited to the access to that particular closet just to me, and no one was allowed access in there, so I could maintain the chain of custody for the evidence in there, we could just use that locker, but it also stores our office supplies and various other things in there that not only does my clerk need access to it, but Constable Hart and his clerk has access to it, and I cannot maintain a chain of custody control with that without a secure locker inside.
Fair enough.
Is that the only closet you have?
Yep, yes, sir.
That's it. Yeah, I mean, for this amount of money, I don't think it's worth the time we're spending. We need to allow him to secure his chain of evidence with good integrity, so there's no questions involved, and in so doing, you know, hopefully be able to address the gun issue.
I agree with Commissioner Dever, I don't think he needs but $1,500 fuel, that way we're equal across the board.
So, are you saying $1,500 for the fuel, and you want to approve the evidence locker and gun locker, and electronic timestamp?
I can see the need for the electronic timestamp.
I'm good with all that, so am I.
Well, I want to say one thing about the vehicles. I am severely disappointed in the fuel efficiency of the vehicles. I know you're saying you're comparing them, but you're comparing them to pickups, and basically, if your job is to deliver civil papers, deliver papers, then I don't even know why you need a pursuit vehicle to do that.
Well, Judge, the state of Texas mandates over 600 hours of training for a constable to take office, 40 hours of training for civil service papers, approximately 30...
We might move all that back to the sheriff's department if we can't get any better fuel efficiency and budgetary responsibility from the constables.
Judge, do you have any idea, well, you might, I can bring forth the miles per gallon that the vehicles that we drive get as compared to the others. You can take a look at the miles driven per month in each office, do a comparative analysis of ours and the other constables' offices throughout the state of Texas. The constable's office in no precinct in the state of Texas is limited to strictly the service of papers. It's not set up for that in the constitution of the state of Texas, it's not set up for that in Hood County, is not now and has not been.
It has been. Several years ago.
So just, so we can move on here, but I just think that the court, in previous courts before you and I, has been very, very good with trying to keep vehicles for the constables.
Yes, sir.
And you have a very nice vehicle, to the point that I get harassed about it, because it's so nice, but the fact is, I think we're just asking you to be cognate. If you're gonna make a trip, try to take three papers to the same precinct when you go, is all I'm asking, because we don't, you're not the only one that gets chastised over fuel. The sheriff has to deal with it, the fire marshal deals with it, and the rest of the constables, and we aren't just, you are in no court, you don't know, we don't know what Greg Stewart's gonna hand us in July for the evaluations, so this may be the beginning of the melting of the iceberg, who knows?
Absolutely.
That's all we're asking, is to be cognate of your fuel, okay?
And I will be cognate as long as there's not a, it's not implied by the court that my office has been imprudent in the expenditure of our funds.
You just happen to be here, Joe. That's not what we're here really to discuss.
All right, well, I have a motion to approve the, about Commissioner Dever, I believe.
Have a second.
And who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, for $1,500 in fuel and approve the evidence locker and the gun ammunition locker and the, and do I, was that the stamp in there too?
Yes, ammunition, evidence locker, gun ammunition locker, and the stamp.
Then any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Joe. All right, consider and take appropriate action regarding a request to the second floor courtroom for the National Day of Prayer. Now, what this is, is that they have made a motion, or some people have come to us and wanted to go up and from 6:30 to 8:30 at night, on the National Day of Prayer, to have a prayer up there. And the, I called TAC, the Texas Association of Counties Attorneys, and they said that they knew of no reason why that they, that we could not do this, but they did caution, they said that you do need, probably need to establish a policy and for the use of the courthouse, and also that once you do this, you have opened the door for any group that wants to come in and use the courthouse. So you have set a precedent here. So, having said that, what's y'all's pleasure?
I'll make a motion, we open it up for the National Day of Prayer.
All right, a motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second for that?
Discussion.
All right.
You know, we allow them to use the gazebo, I mean, and I thought the marathon deal out in the gazebo was a olive branch to meet them halfway, but I sure not have a problem with the National Day of Prayer. I don't have, that's, and that's what will happen if we reject this, but just be aware, any group that comes to town, once we set precedent, is gonna have a right to use county facilities.
That's correct.
We've already had one, wanted to set up the John Birch Society to hand out literature, you know, and I, I don't know anything about them, but I know that they've already, so if we do this, anybody, Ku Klux Klan, whoever.
Well, we, I do know we have a policy about candidates can't have fundraisers or use county facilities, you know, I think that, somebody tried to use our back room a couple times, and they've not been allowed to use it for political activities. I think that they need this by, might next week, though, don't they? May the 2nd's when they're wanting to do it.
I would amend it, if you will, to say that any group that is requesting use of it to recognize an already nationally recognized day, or holiday, or whatever you want to call it, would be permitted to use it. I don't think the Ku Klux Klan any longer has national days that honor them, and I don't think the, some of the other groups that we discussed offline have national days of that nature either.
That's a good way to put it, Dick.
That's very good.
Very good.
All right, so...
It could still have to come to court like this request, but if you're gonna take, I mean, if you turn a group down in years to come, no matter what the group is, then they'll have obviously some avenues to go and test it.
Legally, yeah, and I think if we, if we, if we compress it to nationally, to days that our, our national government recognizes for celebratory purposes, even though that day may be different in different counties, it is nationally recognized. If we do that, I think with them coming to court, at least we have grounds for discussion.
Very well put.
All right.
Is there not a private place they can go?
Probably, probably, probably there is. The thing about it is, is everybody likes that courtroom, you know, the...
Except the Commissioners' Court.
Except, yeah. But, so Commissioners Dever's first...
Motion.
Motion died for lack of a second. Is, you want to restate that with Commissioner Rohn's?
Yeah, who we honor with a national...
With an already recognized national day.
Okay. Do you want a second there, Commissioner Rohn? All right, so now we have that, that motion in front of us. Any further discussion?
Are they still using the gazebo for the marathon, or does it have anything to do with that?
It doesn't have anything to do with it.
So this is two groups.
Two groups, and it is...
So what, I'm just throwing this out there, so what's gonna happen is the marathon Bible readers are gonna now ask for the use of the courtroom, and it's gonna interfere with yours and Judge Tuggles' court schedule, but you're gonna tell them no.
Well, this is 6:30 to 8:30 at night, and they have to have security, by the way. They have to have...
They have to pay for it?
I would...
You ask the 1776 to pay for it?
Yes, yes. Now, I can't, that's coming out of Constable's office, Constable Four's office, and that's between him and them, but they, they have to have Matt Hatfield to do the security.
So the next question is when they want to use this room, or Judge Walter's room? I mean, we've opened...
I know, you're opening the door, I know. That's the reason I prefaced all of it with that.
But, again, the association to something already nationally recognized is gonna limit that.
I understand it, Dick, but every school district makes them have prayer at the pole, they don't let them go into gymnasium and do it. I'm, I thought we gave them an olive branch with a gazebo. I just, and we, you know, in my six years, we've caught flak a couple times at the gazebo from groups asking to use the courtroom for certain things that, and I'm not, please don't write, I'm against prayer, but I just think that if we have some, I mean, I don't know, you have to look at the calendar, but there'll be something comes up, that'll be a national day of something that, that will be an opposing issue, that, that somebody will want to do it, and we've, we're gonna have to let them do it.
Well, we are if the national government recognizes an according day.
We got a motion and a second, let's vote on it and see how we go.
All right.
Is public discussion allowed?
You should have signed up.
National Atheist Day, all the year.
Yeah, I'd like to hear her comment.
Yeah, but that's not declared by the national government, that's declared by the That's not recognized, you'll never, you won't see the United States government coming out and saying, you know, put your flags at half-mast, because it's National Atheist Day.
The only thing is, TAC said it was okay, but I still think, and the fact is, I, somebody's gonna come back here and want to have a meeting here that's going to create controversy for future courts to come, so, you know, as long, as long as everybody is prepared to sit here and let them line up, I hope they remember the day we were here on April 23rd, and we allowed this for the National Day of Prayer, so that, as we're getting clobbered by the people that are letting the atheists speak, because they could go to the federal government and get that as a national day.
Won't happen.
I never thought a lot of things would happen, it's happening, Dick.
All right, then, then if it happens, we'll call a special media the next day and change our policy.
We don't even have a policy, Dick.
We're establishing one. Okay, we're establishing one here.
If we had more time, I'd table this before we could have discussion, actually have a policy and look at it, but we have no time as of May the 2nd.
All right, we have a motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion failed, but three to two. Purchasing, consider and take appropriate action for the CMAR, for the RFP 2013-07 Animal Control Building.
We come today to try to work out and approve a contractor for construction manager at risk for both the LEC building, I mean, not LEC, EOC, the Emergency Operations Center and Animal Control. And I know there's gonna be some discussion about who we might want to pick, and at this point in time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. McGee. Did you all receive the email from me with the tabulations?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do you have them, or do you need a copy?
I have mine, I have copies. Morning, Judge, Court. How are y'all this morning? I brought extra copies, just in case. Okay, yeah. The email, the...
Bigger picture. Sir? Bigger. I can see it better. Thank you.
Back this wall if you have to. Okay. First of all, Judge, if I may, let me give a brief, a very brief overview of the process we just went through. A little over two weeks ago, and according with the bidding specification of the state of Texas, we went out for a CMAR, which is Construction Manager at Risk Proposals. There are several requirements in that, and we have, over the last 15, 20 years since the CMAR has been available to counties, we have been taking and placing packages out. They continue to modify some of the requirements, although they're beginning to be fairly nuanced at this point in time with just very minor changes. We were very fortunate, we had 12 proposers take out packages from our office, we had five submit proposes, proposals, and what the numbers represent, you may remember back about six weeks ago, we talked about the CMAR process before we approved it. All of the numbers that you see here are parts of a project, whether it is CMAR, whether it is bid, straight bid proposals, whether it is design build, it makes absolutely no difference. All the pieces, all of the things that we requested in our 50 to 60 item list, all those, to a varying degree, are part of every project. What you typically do not get to do is to see these numbers, okay? And each proposer has an option to say whether it is a job cost or it's a cost that he has. Over the years, through the help of various contractors, this is how we've come up with the list that we have. Some of the items are appropriate, some are less appropriate, depending on the size and scope of each project. We opened the bids on April 28th, I mean, on April the 18th at 2:00 PM at the purchasing agent's office, and the results, as, as you can see here, we received proposals from modern contractors, Schmolt Construction, Pete Grant and Associates, FJW, and Rocking Nest Construction. As you go across these items, you'll see the abbreviations at the bottom. We have the pre-construction cost, which is the PC portion, we have the construction services percentage, we have the construction services amount, the field and office staff, which includes, you know, their truck superintendent, project management, et cetera. If you looked at the actual proposals themselves, typically, most of the proposers put somewhere between thirty and fifty percent for a project manager, and we would like them to have, on a combined bid, a hundred percent for their superintendent, that will be going between the two projects. It shows that the combined bid is going to be a less expensive approach, as we discussed during our previous court meetings. If you look across this area, you'll see that, starting from the lowest proposer to the, to the fifth proposer, was a total, when you run all the way across, of two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars. Their fee for that was two-hundred, was two-point-five percent. The only thing in this, when you look at this, another reason we break it out, is the off, office, field office, and overhead in the field for the general conditions, that is a set amount, okay? That amount is set now, today, in today's terms and today's dollars. The fee will float, up or down. If our goal with a CMAR, our goal is to get you the, the best building for the least amount of dollars possible. Let me re-emphasize this, you, as a court, will have input in absolutely every step, okay? We may visit with various staff members that you have us report to, but each and every one of those decisions will come back to the court for your approval and for your review. So, it is a very team-oriented and integrated process, but as I said, the OFS is set, the only thing that can vary, which will vary up and down, depending on where the final budget is as far as what you have. So, those are the, those are the numbers. Now, as far as the criteria, we had nine criteria for the evaluation, they were worth a total of a hundred and fifteen points. As we go across, you know, the scores range from ninety-five points to seventy points. A large variety of those are based on some very black and white items, and some are a little more subjective. The size, for instance, Modern Contractors, who happen to be the low proposer, they're experienced at the firm in similar-sized projects. All of these firms are excellent firms, let me say that. They all have experience in similar-sized projects, but not necessarily similar-type projects. Modern, in particular, has done four animal control buildings during the course of the last few years. So, that's why they got a couple of points higher, and, which is denoted by that notation number one, than the, than the rest of the others. The others, you know, I have varying experience with them and contact with them, they are all, you know, certainly capable of doing these projects and working, working with the county. Working with a team, similar experience, again, if they, looking at their experience criteria, they all seem very capable in item three, the chemistry of team with other Hood staff, that could either be zeros or fifteens, I chose to take the fifteens across there because all of the ones that I've talked with seem to be team-oriented type of contractors, experienced with the CMAR type of approach. Again, they've all had experience over the years, and their years of service have varied greatly, from, oh, probably fifteen, twenty years to, you know, over thirty years of experience. So, all of these firms are highly qualified. Best value to the county, that's based on their pricing, and basically, what we did is sort of a inverse ratio, to take the lowest proposer and the highest proposer and work a ratio out based on the fifteen points available to that, that particular category. None of the proposers, to my knowledge, or at least in the experience that was written into the proposals that they sent, have absolute direct working knowledge with the county. They, a lot of them have worked here in the county, but they've not worked with the county directly. So, that's sort of the rundown of how we approached the scoring mechanism for this. Oddly enough, the scoring mechanism works back pretty close to what the overall proposals are, when you take a look at the, the contrasts across there. You may note on the Pete Durant and Associates, there is a note there, during the course of my review, I found a minor inconsistency in their proposal. It does not affect the overall outcome or the rankings, but they had a little mathematical error in the, in the calculation. They had used, for some reason, two-point-two million rather than two-point-four-five million for their calculation. Sir?
Is that why you have that in red?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that, their original, their original proposal was eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars lower than what's shown on here. It was really, it was seventy-one-five was for their, their overall construction cost there for the CS column. In the interim, while the project was bidding, we have also taken several opportunities to meet with various staff and other groups to look at what the overall plans are. We have a couple of plans this morning that are continuing to involve, they're different than what they were last week. One of the things that we also wanted to take and point out is, with the EOC, one reason that we pushed this so quickly, is that the EOC has such a tight deadline to be able to be finished on February first. Normally, would take another three to four weeks of, of consideration for all of these in a little bit different manner, in a little more relaxed manner, but due to the schedule, that seven-and-a-half-month schedule is, that's why the need for urgency to continue with this process. At this rate, we would like to, assuming everything meets with your approval after your questions, we would look at starting fast-track construction about the middle of June for the EOC, slightly later for the Animal Control. And I might say this, the first item in those columns under the pre-construction fee, which would be a thousand dollars, when you sign this contract, it is two parts. One part is to sign up, it gives basically the general rules of the contract, it's a standard contract, and the only thing you're obligated for is this pre-construction fee, period, okay? If after that point, you are not happy, you're not satisfied with the proposer that you select today, then you can take and pay that amount of dollars, the thousand dollars, or whichever one you select, and move to the next one, or cancel the project at that point with no additional funds owed to that particular proposer. That's the way this works, so you get a look upfront as to what the building is going to cost you. Then, the second part of the contract is called Exhibit A, that's where they give you a guaranteed maximum price. And in that price, their number here, plus whatever adjustments with the fee, will be the number that you have. And it will be a guaranteed maximum price for the project, unless you make a change, and that's the only way that that should change, so. Any questions?
How soon will you be back with those kind of bids and stuff?
I'm sorry?
How soon, how soon would you be back with some of that stuff? I mean, how soon will you be back?
Oh, well, the schedule right now calls for us to have a contract by the twenty-ninth and start the pre-construction at that particular point in time. What I would anticipate is, we would probably like, from an Animal Control standpoint, we would like to review the four projects, or the projects, whichever one you select, assuming it was low, and we'd like to review those. If not, we'd like to go and review other ones that, with the other proposers. As far as the EOC goes, I know you've already made several trips to look at a couple of EOCs. We have a plan today that has various options on it to show what future expansion could be, as well for, perhaps for IT in the future, if you need to add a bay or two bays, or if you wanted to add sheriff functions into that area, which I know was, was a long-time plan, and in the basis of about fourteen-hundred square feet, we have a scheme, it's not necessarily finalized yet, but it is a workable scheme, and it's one that we have several variations on that we can take and speak to you about. So, we are prepared to move as fast as we can. When I say a fast-track, the first thing we would need to do for the EOC is, is make sure we re-establish where the floodplain line is. As y'all have had here before court, floodplain lines have been known to move the last few months, due to the new technical evaluation of what those lines are by the Corps of Engineers, and that does not always agree with what's actually on the ground. But for us to meet our deadline, we'll need to do our survey and our soils testing for test borings immediately, so we can get the, the foundation portion of that established, and the structure established.
What's y'all's pleasure?
Your recommendation is Modern Contractors is the way I read this?
Yes, sir.
And if we walk, if you get prices and we walk away, we pay them a thousand dollars?
That's correct.
And walk away? Motion to proceed.
Oh, with, with. Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Ron, to continue with Modern Contractors, is that your, okay?
Recommendation, I mean, that's what it says on the sheet.
All right, is, any further discussion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next one is oh oh eight, which is the Emergency Operations Center.
And this is, this would be the same motion that you just had, because this was for both projects, it was a.
We'll bid together.
Okay, we bid it both together, all right, then, then that's.
A and B's together.
Oh, A and B together, okay.
I want to, I'll make a motion that we approve B as well.
All right, have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded?
Yes.
By Commissioner Ron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Considering, take appropriate action, enter into agreement for cardboard recycling bales with G.P. Harmon.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge, Court.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. James McCoslin came to me with a idea of bailing our cardboard, and he has been talking to several vendors. This is not something that would cost the county money, it would actually help make the county money. He did talk to more than one vendor, so that we can show competitiveness in allowing someone to have the business, and he is more familiar with this project than I am, and I would like for him to speak to you on its behalf.
Judge, Commissioners, as the purchasing agent said, I need contact three different potential companies that could purchase cardboard from the county that's currently being bailed out at the Citizens Collection Station. The pricing was based on the, the monthly indexing price for cardboard, and that fluctuates with, as does all other commodities. But, so they, if you look at the pricing, which I hope is included in your packet, it's based upon a subtracted value from the monthly index, and with that being said, G.P. Harmon is a larger company, they're actually a paper mill, and they operate extensively in this area around the metroplex, and have multiple accounts, and was able to offer the best pricing over the two other companies. There was a company out of Denton, and another company out of, I'm going to say on I-35, it was Evergreen, but G.P. Harmon did offer the best pricing at, for instance, based on the March value of a hundred and ten dollars per ton, the county would make eighty-five dollars a ton, whereas Pratt Industries was going to subtract sixty dollars off of that index, and then further down, Evergreen was going to subtract eighty-five dollars, so it's, there's quite a bit of difference in that pricing, but.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve the cardboard recycling bales with G.P. Harmon, second.
So, move.
All right, have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, and seconded by Commissioner Dever.
I thought you was making the motion, that's why I seconded yours.
Well, I can, but, all right, any further discussion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Judge.
We're now adjourned at eight, I mean, what is it, ten forty-two?